Let's listen to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Bill Strange, 609 Grill Avenue in Lewiston. I'm just, this is in the response to the proposed fire station at Fifth and Brighton. I think as a city, we're making a catastrophic mistake placing it there. And the traffic at the intersection has to be one of the worst in the city. I've worked at the airport for 33 years. I drive it every day, morning and night, so I know. And it's horrendous. I've had four people that I work with know have been in accidents there, rush hour traffic. And this isn't going to make it any better. But if you drive through there or just park and watch traffic from like 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning and 4:00 to 6:30 at night, sometimes it gets backed up for a block each direction. And so anyway, not only the traffic issue, but consider the cost of taking that piece of property off the tax roll, which we have already, but we can put back on. The same size piece of property on the other side of Brighton brings in $38,000 a year in taxes. And over a 50-year life expectancy of the building, that amounts to $1.9 million in lost tax revenue. That's assuming we never have a tax raise. So that number is probably closer to 4 million by the time you stretch it out. Anyway, the intersection at Fourth and Brighton, if you move down, it needs a traffic light in there, fire station or not. So that's something the city is going to have to address. All my friends that work at the airport that go either down Brighton Canyon or to Clarkson, they leave, drive through the parking lot, go up to Seventh Street so they can get onto Brighton to go through. It's impossible to get on there. And so there's no turn light when you're headed northbound on Fifth Street. So one car gets through per rotation of the light. So they just go on up to Seventh because nobody's coming across Seventh the other way. And so they go through there. Anyway, the intersection at Fourth and Brighton would provide a quicker response time, according to the chief. And the chief says response times are the most important factor in the station location. The city already owns that property, so it's not on the tax roll now. So it generates no income. So the chief said it'll cost 16,000 a year, but that 16,000 a year, you'll be paying yourself. You own that property. And so the lease also could be traded out for airport, fire, and rescue, which it used to be, it was done for many years. So there's a zero cost there. It was all approved by the FAA, but they have to be on the airport property in order to do that. I mean, I fully agree that a new fire station is needed, but Fifth and Brighton is the wrong location for that. I've talked to many people over the last few years why this has been going on. And not one person thinks that's a good location that I have talked to. And I guarantee if you put this before the taxpayers, that this would be, it would fail overwhelmingly. And at a previous councillor meeting, Mr. Kleberg said, well, but we're going to lose $972,000 if we walk away from this. Well, I can't imagine that moving it from one flat location to one block away, a flat location, is going to change anything in the planning to speak of. So if you move it, you're moving it across the street and down a block. So he said it would cost us $972,000 if we move it. But the property is worth almost that if we just turn around and resold the property. So that property was listed 2016 for 460, or 2011 for $461,000. It's got to be worth double that now, which make it 922. So that just about would recover all of the property. And anyway, so, and that would get it back on the tax roll to where it could produce almost $40,000 a year. And to tell you the truth, I don't think the fire department even thinks it's the right location. But I think that they have been pushed down the road so long on this new fire station that I think they're willing to compromise location just because they want a new fire station. And I get it, you know, they've been pushed down the road and pushed down the road. And so anyway, I just think we need to think about these options because this design, this deal is going to affect us for the next 50 years. It's going to affect our grandkids. And there's not going to get to be less traffic on there, only more traffic. And so I think you, and I think you would find the airport board, they think, well, that takes so long. The airport board now works at the speed of business, not the speed of government. And I think you could see if they decide to move it there, I'll bet you in one month's time, they would approve it going in there. And that's just my opinion on that, nobody else's. But anyway, thank you.
Hi, hello?
You're just going to have to speak out.
Oh, is it not working?
Just speak out.
Oh, okay. Hope y'all can hear real right, but my name is Malik Prior and I am a resident of Clark.
Hey Malik, do you mind standing right here? This mic's on, I think that'll...
Okay. Hear me better now? Okay. My name is Malik Prior and I am a resident of Clarkson, Washington. And speaking of Brighton today too, I've noticed that, you know, that's definitely a place where the buses should also be going as well since that, since that's one...
Just hold it up.
Oh, I can hold it up. Okay. There we go. Okay. Okay. My name is Malik Prior and I am a resident of Clarkson. And speaking of Brighton, I've noticed that that's another place that the buses should be going as well because I've noticed that's where, you know, one of the most busiest streets and it would help out a lot of people up there. And I even take care of a guy up there too who can't, who can no longer drive, but he has to hitch rides from people too. So it's another good reason why, you know, I'm trying to make the buses more dependable. So all those people who currently are having to hitch rides and stuff and whatnot. And it would be nice for all of them to be able to just depend on the buses more instead of having to rely on other people. So, and so, and a lot of people up there, especially those seniors too, definitely are on board with it and definitely agree that this is a huge need for public transit. So that's why I worked so hard to gather all that. And hopefully, something will, something will be done to help improve it. So because lots of people are having issues seven days a week due to them stopping so early. And so people are having to hitch rides to and from work and everywhere. And it's just, I've just had several complaints in the last week that they're not very convenient. So, and that's it.
Hello, John Michael. I live here in Lewiston. After the pandemic, during the pandemic, right, we learned a lot of things. We learned isolation leads to fear, leads to loneliness. I talked to a lot of people that are not aware we even have homeless people here in town. Well, we do. And we didn't have a shelter this winter. And one place that's been helping them even to have a place to go downtown or anywhere, a first step for life is close their doors. I'm not sure what happened there, they may be out of funding. But imagine being isolated all your life. Kept out of school, isolated at school, isolated in your family. And now we've made them disappear. You know, our policies, you can't, you know, youth community center, you can't do this. If I told you, I don't know, if I told you, it makes me want to cry, the situations I know they're living in. It's terrible. And I'm not mad at anybody, I love everybody and I know everybody's got a job and stuff. But what makes us human? It's not our status, right? It's not our power, it's not our money. It's our connection to each other. And if we're busy thinking we're powerful and status, well, we're not going to want to help anybody of a different status, right? Well, these are human beings. And you guys have a committee, right? A homeless committee or something like that? Do you? Okay, so let's get something done, all right? I mean, you understand what I'm saying? Drug use, I mean, no place to get clean. The other thing, I think, it, community in general is good, right? We've got a park in rec. Let's put on some community events where literally everybody of every class feels welcome. You know, we used to have a lot of dances over at the community center when I was in high school. There's a lot of things we could be doing to bring ourselves together. The other thing that I'm a little concerned about with, the people that have sort of money and power and status in town don't own a lot of property downtown. And...
Fighters. They're all agreed that that location is, is not a good location. You wanted to do anything would be to remodel Station Two and model Station Four. Take that money that you were going to spend, remodel the stations. All the city supposedly, all the city buildings are out of code or whatever need fixed. So that's another, that's another story too. But that station there is not the right location. I'm with him. I think if you ask the chief, he's probably the same way, that, that location is bad. Then the city's going to put a four lane from Fourth up to Seventh. That ain't going to work. How do you get two lanes into one lane after you get up to Seventh? All the, all the city's doing is pushing traffic from Fourth up to Seventh. Got about five of those in town right now that you drag race on a two lane to get to the one lane. You drag race to get there. I had a guy the other day, and I can see why they build dentist offices across the street. Any of you people ever drive up, going south on Fifth Street, turn east, cross Fifth? Have you ever done that? Well, don't do it very fast because you're going to end up over there at Bocchi's office getting your teeth fixed. But I actually had a guy pass me in the medium strip. After I, after I went around the corner, he passed me on medium strip. I caught up to him on Seventh, followed him all the way down to Thane. I mean, that's how, I mean, two lanes ain't going to do anything if you don't fix the traffic. But part of the problem this wasn't you people. Some of the people on previous councils have caused this problem at the Lewiston Airport, at the fire station. I was one of the first people in that fire station. I can tell you all about that fire station and headquarters and Station Two. We have another one that we don't have that should be there, that one day the council will have to address putting another fire, putting that fire station back in service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
That does work.
No, it's working now.
Is it?
I think we...
Check. Ken Cron, Lewiston. I'm back again. I just, I just find it hard to believe we don't use some common sense around this city. I mean, Bill said it the best right there. We had it, we had a plan. They had a game plan to put the fire station, piggyback on where Station Four is now and our previous city council blew it and it's sad. But you cannot put a fire, you shouldn't put a fire station on Fifth and Brighton. I mean, it's just unacceptable and no common sense there. Anyway, I just want to reiterate what those two said. Number two, our water and sewer money, I'll hit this again, that initiative that was passed that said collecting utilities stays in that utility. There should be plenty of money in there. I don't know how soon we pay off those new wells, but they should be. And enough money to carry over and start on that water tank. Remember that. I'd like to know where that money is. And I have yet to hear where that money is. Number two, another thing is our street plan. I don't know, I'd like to see a plan for our streets where we not overlay, but pick up the whole street and replace it because we don't have a plan. But we have enough money to go in and put a $350,000 roundabout where, and I still trying to figure out what that's for. If it's to slow people down, we should have put in two stop signs and put a cop there part-time. I mean, that, and like I said, if you fix Brighton and make it four lanes, you solve a big problem on Borough. And the last thing, and I don't know why this city doesn't do it, bring in an outside audit. Instead of getting our, instead of being rubber stamped every year, I'd like to know where all our money is. And that would be a big question. Number two, our taxes. My taxes have doubled in the last five years. The middle class can only pay so much, people. And we respect you to do the right thing with our money. We hope we do. Thanks, thanks for your time and thanks for serving for us.
Thank you, Ken. Further citizen comments? Dr. Ravencroft?
I had a citizen comment that was submitted via email earlier today. This is from Kevin Kelly. I am sorry I'm unable to be there in person in regards to your discussion about the emergency expenditure of up to 2 million to repair the water reservoir. I would ask that you vote no. I live in the area that would be affected by watering restrictions. I like my grass to be green, but I believe spending this kind of money to water our lawns is poor judgment. This money could be better spent on many places in our city. For example, repair, rebuild of 21st Street, the project to widen Brighton Avenue, or just helping those families directly affected by the flooding get back to normal. I know Dustin has worked hard on this issue, but I would rather the city move in a deliberate and well-planned, long-term solution to the issue. Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record and speak loudly and clearly into the microphone. Thank you.
My name is Alex Briggs and I am a childcare provider in Lewiston. I just wanted to speak on the Week of the Young Child proclamation. We have been celebrating it for the last three years. It is a way to bring awareness to how important and significant early childhood is in every individual's life and how early childhood education impacts that. It's a really fun way to get the kids and the community involved to discuss these important topics. Early childhood education impacts us all as when someone has a healthy early childhood, it builds those skills and resiliency and social emotional regulation through the rest of our lives. And so that impacts the justice system, our education system, and pretty much every other system that is involved with people. So I just wanted to support the proclamation for that Week of the Young Child of the first week of April.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Anderson and I am also an early childhood provider here in the valley. And I just also wanted to say that we are so grateful that this, the Week of the, for the early childhood, the proclamation is being recognized. Early childhood education is, is something that all of us should be thinking about and concerned about whether or not you have young children in your life directly. It does impact our entire community. So I'm, I'm really grateful that this is being formally acknowledged by the council and the city of Lewiston. It could not be coming at a more important time for all of us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. I will close citizen comments. We'll move on to presentations. And we do have a couple of proclamations today. The first one is Week of the Young Child, so we'll start with that. I'm going to step down and call Lysia and Darcy forward. Find the right stuff. Yeah.
What is your D?
Okay, councillors, next up is item 4C, a financial report, a financial report for February 2023 in accordance with Idaho Code 50-2008, 2008. This, there's, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for what you do. There is no oral report unless you have questions, councillors.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, Roman number five, public hearings and related action items. First up, item A, public hearing RE, ZNC 23-000002 and CPA 23-000002, accepting testimony on a proposal to amend the comprehensive plan designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential and rezone from suburban residential R1 zone to medium-density residential R3 zone for approximately 8.96 acres generally located east of 18th Street, north of Airway Avenue, south of unimproved Bryden Avenue. And with us tonight, we have Ms. Katie Hollingshead. Katie, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record and remember to speak up loudly and clearly, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. Katie Hollingshead, Assistant Planner, here tonight with some zoning actions, CPA 23 number two and ZNC 23, also number two. This is the class 2B zone, approximately 8.96 acres.
Katie, I have to interrupt you because I didn't go through the steps of announcing the public hearing. We want to make sure we cross the Ts and not the Is.
I will wait for you to...
And I, and I apologize. So I announced the subject, the public hearing. How it's going to work is I will open the public hearing, there'll be a staff presentation by Ms. Hollingshead, applicant's testimony or presentation if they're here this evening, testimony from the public. Councillors, you may ask questions of the staff applicant in persons providing testimony. I do know that we have one written comment tonight that we'll receive for the record. No additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed. So this is the time to ask questions that you may have. After that, if there's an applicant's rebuttal to any public testimony, we'll accept that. Then we will close the public hearing. So I will officially open the public hearing, Ms. Hollingshead.
Do I need to introduce myself again?
Please reintroduce yourself, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Katie Hollingshead, Assistant Planner, here tonight with CPA 23 number two and ZNC 23 number two, comprehensive plan map amendment and proposed rezone. Proposed rezone is from R1, which is our suburban residential zone, to R3, which is our medium-density residential zone. Fully in this way. Annie, can you give me control of, thank you. There you go. Okay, so our site location is generally located east of 18th Street, and so that's our north-south direction, north of Airway Avenue and south of unimproved Bryden Avenue. This is also known as ex-personal RPL 0097, 003, 0008. 8.9 acres of vacant farmland currently. You can see it on our map as shown, subject property outlined. And so, unimproved Bryden is to the north, Airway Avenue to the south, and you can see there's to the west, another vacant piece of farmland. To the east are some single-family dwellings. Also to the north is our Canyon Crest subdivision. So again, subject property, just with our zoning layer turned on our GIS, so it shows that R1 zone and then the planned unit development. Outlined in red. A little more context of here, this is, subject property outlined in black with the big X on it. You can see land to, a little bit further to the east is in the county. Again, north is that land units, land unit development, Canyon Crest subdivision. And you can see those houses to the north and the platted line for houses that were platted but did not exist at the time the GRS codes were taken. At the south, you can see lots of just regular, single-family duplex dwellings. And like usual, we have site photos, so it is vacant land. Like I said, there is some topography change from the south end to the north end, and it kind of goes up and the road kind of goes down. And you can see it's a flat piece of ground that was previously... Other side of the airway, family dwellings. Airway is a, one of those skinny, was at one point, an alley in between the five-acre parcels that existed. And so you can kind of see how skinny it is. Across the street, and what appears, I've, the rest of unimproved Airway, where those trailers are parked. Okay. Will you still hear me? Okay, very good. And so then again, looking from the southwest corner of the subject property, north on 18th Street, so in the very far north, you can see some fences and houses in the Canyon Crest subdivision. Then I'm, this portion is where I'm standing at, the unimproved portion of Bryden Avenue, so that's that gravelled area with the trees in it. And then on the other corner, the southeast corner of the property, looking north, and so the single-family dwelling you could see in the first map is on the one side, subject property on the other side. And then again, looking down Airway Avenue. This is the house next door. And then slightly unusual for a zone change, but this applicant did choose to include this, is a example, a draft, if you will, of what he will eventually be submitting for his subdivision plat application. The council is not approving a plat tonight. The plat has not been finalized in any way, shape, or form. The applicant just wanted to give an example of what he was trying to achieve with the rezone. So he's looking to do what's called small lot development, which allows for lots to be down to 4,000 square feet in size and has different standards for width and depth dimensions than a standard zoning. So small lot development is allowed by right in that R3 medium-density zone, which is why he chose to pursue that particular zone. And then finally, a picture of what the proposed development would actually look like. He's looking to do duplex homes that would have a shared wall as the lot line. So this is an example of some that he has built in Clarkston, and this would be what the finished product would look like on this property. And so Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing to consider these two applications on February 22nd. And after receiving some testimony and a report from the applicant, voted six to zero to direct staff to write an approved reason statement, which they then signed at their March 8th regular meeting. And the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to council is that you approve both the comprehensive plan map amendment, which would be the first step, and to also approve the rezone from the R1 suburban residential to the R3 medium-density residential, which would be step two. And council would, if council chooses to approve those two actions at a later date, council would then see a plat application come through after review by city staff. And I would stand for questions.
Thank you, Katie. Councillors, any questions at this time? Councillor Cleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Katie, been down this road before, neighborhood seven. Vacant lands in this neighborhood consist of lands used for pasture, lands otherwise unsuitable, and blah, blah. The orchard was originally platted for five-acre lots. Over time, the, I guess what I'm getting to is neighborhood seven is more rural in nature than it is in the other six neighborhoods in this town.
For the most part, yes.
And I guess, the problem I'm having is, you know, I don't have a problem with infill development and whatnot, but it seems to me that in light of what the desired objectives are, according to the comprehensive plan, this is actually increasing density quite a bit more than what is proposed or what has been passed in the comprehensive plan.
So the medium density is a much higher density. If you look at gross numbers, that is correct. In the staff report, I did include what the actual calculation of homes that would be proposed for this property, and it still does fall under that low-density designation for the actual number of homes that could be built.
Kay? Councillor Lott, Kay?
Katie, can you tell me how we determine if... Find my sentence here, but it was in the staff report, and I believe it was in reference to Planning and Zoning's reason statement. It stated that we are underzoned and overzoned. How do we determine, how do we, what's the parameters as far as overzoning and underzoning? I've not really heard that term.
So I think that we use that term specifically because if you look at our zoning map as a whole, the amount of land that is zoned, R3, which is medium-density residential, or R4, which is high-density residential, is very, very, very limited in comparison to the R1, R2, or R2A zones.
Follow up.
Councillor?
Thank you. And so then to Councillor Cleberg's question. If we are addressing this by neighborhoods, or, you know, is there, within the comprehensive plan, they couldn't really find it? Are we going to designate a neighborhood that we keep with that orchard's appeal, animal rights, things like that? Or are we, are we intermingling? I mean, what's the overall plan? Because I feel like every plot we take away gets us to, I mean, and again, I'm, I know we need housing, but I'm trying to figure out and respect the fact that we have longtime residents who are going off of a comprehensive plan that says that, you know, they're going to be able to continue with animal rights, live in a more rural area as we go farther east our orchard. So can you just help us clarify?
Sure. So currently, you know, the comprehensive plan that stands now was written in the late 90s. City is working on a comprehensive plan rewrite with the help of a consultant, which has just kicked off, and will be about an 18-month process. There's definitely the opportunity during that process for things to change in the plan. I foresee a lot of things changing in plan just based off of input that we get from the community as we start doing our outreach. It's one of those things where, you know, the comprehensive plan does specifically say that, you know, growth should be done in a compact manner, utilizing existing services. I think the idea of sprawl is not something that most people like. And I think that trying to encourage infill development, you know, on some of these parcels that are just sitting, that will be able to connect to existing services and extend those services to the point where other people can also use those services. The people along Alder, no, Airway, sorry, don't have access to sewer right now, and most of those folks are on septic systems. So this will be an extension of sewer line, which will allow for some of them to also hook up to sewer line. Also provides the opportunity for other property owners to subdivide their property if they so chose to in the future. As for the density, you know, it's one of those things where there are a number of lots in that immediate area that don't meet the standard that would be required to keep any sort of animal besides chickens on them. That's a half an acre of dedicated pasture area for one large animal or five smaller animals like a goat or alpaca. And then to the north is the Canyon Crest subdivision, which was done as a planned unit development, but does have a higher density of homes and does allow for 50% of the remaining build-out, which I believe is 575 homes total, to be that small lot development, which is, again, like I said, that 4,000 minimum lot size. So I think that in between the two, you'll see that this development is probably going to look similar to that of Canyon Crest. Definitely more dense than, you know, the neighbor next door who has 2.88 acres, but will be a blend of the two, I'm thinking.
Councillor Cleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So kind of touching on the point that Council President Licky was bringing up. And like I said, been down this road. Residents of this neighborhood have strongly expressed a desire for retention of animal rights whenever possible. Preservation of animal rights should be retained, especially along the extremities of the urban boundary. Then it says, in print five, if you will, higher-density uses are not appropriate for this neighborhood for the most part, except when included within a planned unit development, at which time their impact and appropriateness can be evaluated in the context of the proposed development. To me, this kind of flies in the face of what we've got in our comprehensive plan.
I guess I would say to that, that you're not affecting the neighbors having the right to animals, and nobody lives on this property currently. It's an empty piece of property. So a rezone of that portion, so that new housing can be developed, and it's new housing, that's a type that we don't have enough of. We have lots of single-family dwellings going up, and we do not see a lot of duplexes going up, and we don't see a lot of multifamily going up because of the lack of zoned land for those types of housing. And that, I guess my personal thought, and take this or leave this, is that the type of buyer that would be interested in the product that Mr. Young would be presenting is not a buyer who wants five acres and wants animals. They want to live probably in a single level with a smaller yard, with less upkeep, with nice paved streets, city sidewalks, all of those other things that come in, you know, a controlled kind of neighborhood development. And Mr. Young has done planned unit developments with us before. He decided that going the straight zoning with the small lot development that's allowed in the R3 worked well for him, and in his mind's eye, it's a quicker process going that direction.
Councillor Cleberg?
I guess, again, getting to my point is if we're going to start isolating these little parcels and say, except when included within a planned unit development. I guess my point is, what's the point in even having neighborhood seven? It should just be redone and people can build houses upon houses all over the place when the people that typically have lived out there have, A, protested a planned unit development of a 21st Street, and there really was no support, but it passed. So what's the point in even having that language included in neighborhood seven?
You know, I was not with the city. I was not even out of high school when the previous... I was not even out of high school when the previous comprehensive plan was written, so I could not tell you the answer to that.
Okay. Let's see if we can get... Counselor Clutch, would you like to join us? Okay. It's good to see you. Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. I wish I could say that, Katie, but I was out of high school then. So anyway, from my time on planning and zoning and seeing all the... These type of things come before us, and growing up in the orchards, right above Tammany, all of those five-acre lots, I had a lovely, lovely time growing up. It was the most wonderful childhood anyone could ever... I didn't even have... We just put the hackamore on the horse, and all kids climbed on it, and off we went through the orchard. She got to where she would kick us off under the tree limbs so she could go back to her grazing. Anyway, people are abandoning those five-acre lots because they don't want them. So it's not like we're taking something away from the neighborhood. The neighborhood is changing already. They are wanting, like you said, they want sidewalks and smaller houses and smaller lots to take care of. We're not taking them away. We're providing an opportunity for those people to sell their properties, to do something different with it that maybe they want to be part of. And instead of a five-acre lot that has horses and cows or whatever on it that they don't want to take care of anymore. And I think that would have been us if we still lived there. But, you know, because time changes. The neighborhood changes. And those people that have the five-acre lots will still be able to have what they want. And those people that are moving in next to those five-acre lots should know that those were there first. So it should be a good attitude going forward. I'm totally in support of this. Thank you.
Counselor Licky?
Can you clarify? Because I've not seen it. Is the applicant also the owner of the property?
Yes.
And then just back to Neighborhood 7, because again, we are revisiting the comprehensive plan, and hopefully we get community involvement. But looking at the long-term, the second paragraph under "Desired Futures" of Neighborhood Number 7 says that "The City of Lewiston does not wish to promote sprawl, and the community wishes the best utilized scarce tax dollars wisely. Extensions of public utilities outside the corporate limits should be discouraged until the utilities within the city are utilized at a rate of... Rate in excess of 75%, and utilities should only be extended only to property abutting the city limits, so it may be annexed to the city." So can you just clarify, those services are going to be City of Lewiston, or are they Lloyd or CSD?
I believe the water is Lloyd. The sewer will be City Sewer, because that will come... It'll get extended from the north southward from the Canyon Crest development, and that's City Sewer up there.
Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Schroeder, for your comments. But we actually butted heads on the project out there in the East Orchards, again, when there was overwhelming opposition to a project that was being proposed. And your comment was, well, it's going to be a planned development. So they're planning it out. Well, of course, they're increasing the density. Just because it's a planned development doesn't mean it's a good development. That's all I'm going to say.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I kind of have to agree with the other councils about just... It seems like you're putting the... Well, you are putting like a townhome where people have property and chickens, and it just seems like an odd mix versus somewhere where there's more... Where there's other townhomes or other kind of more in the mix of everything versus outskirts where people are kind of wanting to try to go to be able to have a little piece of land or maybe some chickens. And so I just... I'm having a hard time seeing those out there benefiting from this move. Thank you.
Counselor?
Ms. Holling said, "I just want to clarify." You did use the word "different standards" in your presentation. I just want to clarify that this would be subject to city standards.
Correct. Since it would be a straight rezone, if the council chooses to approve it, it'll be subject to all city standards.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, how much land do we have and where is it that we could continue building homes? The available land is to the east of us. We're down here confined by the river, the bluffs. They have open space out there. We don't have very much land to develop, and we need housing. Again, I'm in support of this.
Counselor Littkey?
And I don't know that I have a position, so please don't lump me into either group. I'm really just trying to understand how we make decisions. Because on page 20 of the staff report, it says, "The adjacent Canyon Crest Estate subdivision is a planned unit development that, in its original phase, allows for a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet." This PUD was amended in 2021, and the lot size was increased to 7,500 square feet, but the small lot development, minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet, was allowed as a use by right, with up to 50% of the remaining dwelling units allowed to follow those standards. So what I'm trying to figure out, so that's the adjacent... That PUD is complete?
It is not.
Or is it still in progress?
It is still in progress.
So my question is, is for me, again, and I think maybe Counselor Forsman was alluding, like, are we putting the cart before the horse? If we've already got a PUD, and then we're basing our decision off the fact of that planned unit development, what if that doesn't come to fruition, and now we have kind of in the middle of essentially farmland?
So about 150 of the homes in the Canyon Crest subdivision have been built, and they do have... I can't remember if it's three or four. Several more of their Platts, because they do them in like 12 to 15 lots at a time. I think there's three or four more phases have come in in review. So I think those property... That conglomerate property owner definitely has the intent to build that subdivision out to its full capacity, which I believe is 575 total units. And that was part of the reason they did do an amendment to their PUD back in '21, because they wanted to change their housing type a little bit and allow for the smaller lots. They had some interest in that. That PUD also includes a limited amount of commercial and some multifamily.
Follow-up.
Counselor Littkey?
And correct me if I'm wrong, is that also a PUD that they develop... They're planning to develop or did develop a park in that first...
Yes, there is a park.
And that over as the city?
I would have to verify with Mr. Barker. I don't know if we've taken it over yet or not, but I do understand that that was the plan. Yes and no is the answer.
Oh, I... If I can just follow up with a comment. I guess I'm just going to say that I'm a little gun-shy, in the sense, I believe the developer... I do not want to be a part of shying developers away. However, I feel like we're in a position within the city that we have to make some decisions. When I hear that there's still 500 units to be developed, and we're going to make a decision of a zone change, I'm gun-shy in the fact that we are talking about services that will tax our city's ability to provide services through the sewer. We have decisions still to make there. My only apprehension is that I can make this decision at a later date that isn't going to chase a developer away. And I believe the developer is a... Built solid homes. I'm glad we have him in our area. So I hate to sound that way. I just... I have to agree that until that comprehensive plan has truly been addressed, and we really put our ear to the ground to listen to our residents and what they desire, by doing this, will it affect property values? Will it affect our overall value so that property taxes continue to rise, and we've not taken into account how we can control that? That's where I'm at right now. I think that... I totally agree that we need housing, but, you know, word on the street is it needs to be affordable. And I don't know that lots in that area are going to be very affordable. So I am struggling. I wish that we knew the future, but I do know that we can be conservative in our decisions, that we're protecting our future. So I guess that's where I'm at right now.
Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, Counselor Licky, I mean, I know the developer also, and by way of disclosure, my company does a lot of business with them. What are we going to do to ameliorate the extra traffic that's going to be on Grail and 18th? Because that's the access point into that subject property.
Correct. So our engineering department did review the plan and has suggested that both the traffic impact analysis guidelines have to be followed. That's already been developed for that area. And they're working with the developer on coming up with some traffic calming options. Those usually get fleshed out more so at the stage when the plat actually comes in, and they look at the design guidelines of how the streets are going to look, how the curve radiuses are going to work, and then they decide where those can go to help mitigate problems like that.
Follow-up. Counselor Kleberg?
So there was a council that we had that I previously served with, would have been Carrie Miller, who happened to be part of the, I don't know, Homeowners Association or whatever. And we ended up, against the advice of our city engineering staff, putting a center line down Grail all the way to 18th, because at that time, the traffic impact analysis didn't warrant having a center line. So we went and put it in. Who's paying for that? The paint has to be replaced constantly, especially after the winter. I mean, that's... I guess that's my point. The impact on that neighborhood with this many housing units is going to be huge. So is the city going to be on the hook? Developer going to be on the hook? I mean, the roads eventually are going to have to be wide, and it's already 60-foot right-of-way, and I guarantee you that road probably isn't even 40-foot wide. So who's ultimately responsible? Taxpayers? Developer?
So I'm not going to speak for Public Works, because I'm not. My understanding is, out in that area, there is a fee that they pay based on that traffic impact analysis that was previously done. It's an East Orchard study. I don't know what fund that money goes into, but my understanding is they pay a fee for every home they put in.
Okay.
Thank you, Katie. My understanding is the applicant is not here tonight.
Correct. He is out of town.
Thank you. We do have a letter from a member of the public. Clerk Ravencroft, if you could please read that into the record?
Yes, this is from Noah Prescott, members of the city council. This email is for the public hearing of the proposed development near Airway Avenue and 18th Street. While I see the need for new households, I believe the location of this development is poor land use of our city. Not only will this new development add an average of 40 cars to Thane Road per year of development, but will also add three new streets that will require the city to maintain in 15 to 20 years for a pretty hefty price. I also dislike the garage with an attached homestyle of building, but I recognize that is personal taste rather than feedback of the proposal itself. There are better solutions to our housing problems that will result in much better outcomes for the city and both its current and future residents, and I therefore must disapprove of this proposal. Thank you.
No applicant's rebuttal, nobody here to speak on behalf of the applicant. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed.
Mayor, could I just have you clarify? I don't know if there's any members of the public who are here who are wanting to provide public comment.
Do we have public vote? Public speak on this hearing?
Well, I will recant my statement. We did go over that, but if you have comments, please introduce yourself to the record, and the same rules apply. Three minutes. Welcome.
Sure. Ken Cron Lewiston. Glad I attended this meeting. There should be... This city council should deny any development in southeast Lewiston until our streets are developed and our sewer and water can handle all the new development. Nothing should be approved in southeast Lewiston. Look at your connectors. There's no way Burl or Grail or Powers can handle anymore traffic. That's a no-brainer. And I'll tell you why they're getting rid of those five-acre plots, is because they can't afford taxes. That's why they're getting rid of them. And I agree with Mr. City Councilor Kleberg on all this. Those are set up to be mini-farms. And if you want to ruin the city, go ahead. That's fine. Vote on them. But until you guys set up and put in streets like they should, connectors, like I've talked about, Grail, Powers, Burl, that's the problem with Brighton right now. We cannot move traffic. And until you step up and face that, nothing should be approved to be developed in southeast Lewiston. There's all kinds of property east of Thane, especially on Stewart. I see there's, what, 10 or 20 acres there for sale and over by the airport. So there's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Is there further testimony from the public? My apologies. Again, the applicant's not here to face rebuttal. So with that, I will close the public hearing. I'll move to Item B, Resolution 2023-16, implementing the city council's decision in CPA 23-000002, amending the future land use map, Neighborhood Number 7, East Orchards, of Chapter 6.7 of Lewiston's Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This is an action item. Folks, no action taken.
Kayla Herman, City Attorney. So there are two applications before the council. So the first is associated with this resolution for the comprehensive plan amendment, followed by the application for the rezone. I think council does need to make a decision on both applications. The resolution is currently drafted approving the application, so there could be a motion to approve the resolution, or they could... There could be a motion to deny the resolution. But I think there does need to be a decision on that application, and then followed by consideration of the first reading of the ordinance, and then we can go from there.
Thank you, Kayla. Counsel, we've been advised. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve... Where am I? Motion to approve Resolution 2023-16.
Counselor Kleberg?
For the sake of discussion, I'll go ahead and second it.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Kleberg, to approve Resolution 2023-16. Counselors? Counselors. Counselor Kleberg?
Well, this is, we're just, we're moving to the first reading. And I think there's some of us on this council that probably still need to wrap their head a little bit more around it. I seconded it because I understand the need for housing in town. On the other hand, I go back to my old saying, I don't know if it's the right spot. But since we'll have two more readings, is that correct, counsel?
Not for the resolution. So, the resolution would be the final decision on whether or not to amend the comprehensive plan. There would be three readings on the ordinance. And I would also just remind counsel, regarding the ordinance for the rezone, there are set criteria that counsel needs to consider in making your decision. And then ultimately, whatever that decision is, the reason statement will need to be adopted. So, I think it would be helpful for staff and also possibly counsel tonight to, for you to maybe talk through some of those criteria in making your decision.
I have a question then for Kayla, because I feel like this is a package deal. So, if we vote on this, deny it, work through the reason statement, get lightbulb moments that this should work, we've already made a decision. So, should we work through the reason statement first and then make action on both these motions?
You can certainly discuss the criteria for the rezone if you'd like. For a comprehensive plan amendment, there is no set criteria. But you're exactly right, they really do go hand in hand. And that's primarily because a rezone and the zoning designation has to be in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, they do go hand in hand, you're correct. And I have those criteria, I'd be happy to read those for counsel if you'd like.
Would it be appropriate then for me to ask if the motion maker and the second would withdraw their motions? And then we can entertain?
Mr. Mayor, I'll withdraw my second.
It's up to you, I think however you'd like to handle it.
Since he's withdrawn his second, could go into the other one without me, but it's as discussed.
And then I would just entertain a motion to lay on the table and pick up the next item, will that work?
I think you can probably discuss both of them sort of together, because they do go hand in hand.
Vote separately?
Correct. Yes, you will need a vote regarding the comprehensive plan amendment first, and then followed by a vote as to the first reading on the rezone. But I think it's, it would be okay if you want to talk about some of the rezone criteria as well, right now, since they do go hand in hand. It's really up to counsel.
Before voting on the resolution?
I think that would be okay.
All right, counselor, I'm not going to argue with my legal, because I know better than that. So, counselors, we're going to open this up for discussion on the resolution and then also the reason statement, ordinance 4880. So, with that, Counselor Schroeder?
Well, if I think I understand what we're doing, number two, the subject property is at least as well-suited or is better suited for the proposed zoning district to the existing zoning, if my reading is right, than the existing zoning district. And as you go down through here, residential R3 zone also allows for small lot development by right. This is not a conditional use that we're talking about. It is by right. This allows for smaller lot sizes that require less standards on all properties to create a cohesive, oh, requires design, excuse me, I just had my eye surgery and sometimes my letters get all mixed up. But, requires design standards on all properties to create a cohesive neighborhood feel. So, I think that's in support of this. And that's what we're trying to accomplish here, is that correct, Kayla?
Well, the reason statement is not actually before counsel for consideration tonight. So, whichever direction counsel decides to go for the comp plan resolution and the first reading of the rezone ordinance, staff will then go back and work on the reason statement, which is the council's final written decision, and will, we will bring that back to counsel for formal approval. But, correct, if counsel would like to go through the applicable criteria for the rezone, they can certainly do that tonight and have that discussion, because then that might guide the decision for the comprehensive plan resolution and the rezone first reading.
Thank you.
And I do have the other criteria in front of me, if counsel would like to hear those.
I would.
Please.
Okay. So, this is for the zoning. So, the first is, the proposed rezone is or is not in general conformance with the Lewiston comprehensive plan. The second is, like Counselor Schroeder stated, the subject property is or is not at least as well-suited or is better suited for the proposed zoning district than the existing zoning district. The third is, the proposed rezone does or does not present foreseen immitigable impacts of incompatible uses or development being located in the same vicinity. Number four is, the effects of the proposed rezone are or are not anticipated to place an undue burden upon delivery of services provided by any political subdivision within the planning jurisdiction, including school districts. And the fifth is, the size, type, intensity, and density of development expected to occur on the subject property as a result of the rezoning is or is not suitable for the area and will or will not unduly burden the neighborhood, public infrastructure, or environmental resources.
Counselor Kleberg?
To be honest with you, after the conversations we had tonight, I almost, I'm thinking about making a motion to table this to, I think it's April 10th. Because I think there's several of us on this council that probably really need to go back over the comp plan. I mean, I've been through it. I helped write it back in 2005, the last update or 2004, whenever it was, but I think this is going to need a little more deliberation. My opinion.
Oh, shoot.
Counselors, here's a motion on the, to postpone.
I'm talking about the resolution to the comp plan.
Just the resolution?
Yes.
Postpone that till April 10th? Is that your motion?
That's the motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Lickie, to postpone consideration of Resolution 2023-16 until April 10th. This is a debatable motion.
I'm going to support this motion, because I do feel like, I too have read the comp plan and am a part of the group of, that are discussing how we move forward, but I'm also feeling like I don't have enough information. I would like to hear from the applicant. Maybe there's more information that we're not seeing as far, as far as what he's agreeing to, or will be held accountable to. And I appreciate the traffic plan, but to rezone an area without really, you know, we could pull in the CIP and see where those roads are as far as shape and where they are as far as improvement. And I did briefly look at that. I just feel like, I feel like we should be doing our due diligence plus some to make sure that we are utilizing our power to make sure that we are moving in the direction of the entire city, not just, here's a bell and a whistle that says we're going to improve our housing, but then to find out that there's still unbuilt units in the same area, depleting area where I do feel like there is some appeal there, to not have high-density residential. So, I'm going to agree with that motion to table, so that maybe we can have a little more information from Public Works. Where the fire station, are we going to be able to supply services? I know that it says it meets that, but you know, just any of those information, as we long-term plan for the entirety of the city, I have a problem with making zoning changes.
Mayor, Kayla Herman, City Attorney. If I could just clarify, if counsel is wanting to accept additional testimony or evidence, then an additional public hearing will need to be noticed up and held, if that's counsel's desire. I think we can do that, but the notice requirements would not be done in time for April 10th. So, it would have to be April 24th at the earliest.
Then my motion? If the second agrees, we'll allow that, counselor?
I agree.
Okay, the motion has been clarified, it'll be April 24th. Motion maker and the second agree to that.
And that's with an additional public hearing scheduled for that time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Sir?
Counselor Forsman?
I agree, I don't want to be a wrench for any of our developers that come in, and I appreciate that we want to continue to build and provide more housing. I just, I just don't see that area meeting with what the planned development is proposing. And I do have concerns about the traffic and everything basically that Counselor Lickie has said. And so, I agree that this is, that's why I'm going to go with the motion, is that we need more time to go through everything, and so I'm supportive of it.
I just have a question for Ms. Hollingshead. I had thought I'd read in here that P&amp;Z had unanimously approved this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I was trying to find it, and I wasn't, didn't. Thank you. Where are we? I was looking.
If there's no further discussion, I'm just going to call for the vote.
Perfect.
Counsel President Lickie?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
And this is to put it to the April 24th, correct? Thank you, aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counselor. Motion passes Resolution 2023-16. We will consider that at our April 24th meeting of another public hearing. Order that, next item up is ordinance 4880. Counselor Kleberg?
Mr. Mayor, given that it is dovetailed with the above resolution, I would recommend or make a motion to put that on the April 24th agenda also.
Second.
Removed by Counselor Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Forsman. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Ravencroft?
Counsel President Lickie?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
I will say that that was a voice vote.
We're just going with the same, the postponement. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered team by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselor Lickie?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Removed by Counselor Lickie, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Clerk Ravencroft?
Counsel President Lickie?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counselors. Next up, Roman numeral seven, active agenda, 2022 ADA Annual Report. Review and consider approval of the 2022 ADA Annual Report. This is an action item, and we have Director Johnson with us tonight. Director, welcome.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. In front of you tonight is the 2022 ADA Annual Report. So, just to give you and all those watching tonight a little bit of context of what this actually is. So, in about 20, well, in 2020, we updated our ADA Transition Plan. Within that plan identifies areas of deficiency within the city of Lewiston to meet the ADA requirements, and how the city was going to focus their energies moving forward, so we would become compliant. The reason Public Works is presenting to you tonight is, a bulk of those improvements or proposed improvements are all located within the right-of-way. So, we're talking sidewalks, ADA ramps are something that we tend to talk about the most, but this is the city's ADA Transition Plan. So, within it, it's everything within what the city of Lewiston does. So, talking about staffing, training, our own buildings that we are in tonight, how we are bringing everything up to ADA standards. The annual report kind of matches with the original report that was drafted in 2020, had its first annual report included as part of the template. So, we try and match that template each year, so you can kind of see who's on the disability advisory committee, what actions they took throughout the year, talking about policies and plan updates, programs and services that were provided to the community, and then getting into parks and recreation facilities and public right-of-way improvements. A lot of these improvements, you may notice, some of these are, it doesn't necessarily have to be the city that took these on. So, developers, if they're doing street frontage improvements, counting how many ADA ramps were improved throughout the calendar year, private investment, public investment, you'll see on figure two, some of these are private, or actually, most of those are private on that particular table. And then the final, figure three, the transition plan identified corridors, and these are, you know, corridors for improvement. So, you know, they're your main corridors, Main Street, Thane, 21st, Brighton, D Street, Southway. And so, it identifies, within that exhibit calls out specifically projects that are called out on the CIP, and if any of those are tabbed for improvements in the next foreseeable future. So, that's kind of a high-level summary, the annual report, or yes, the annual report was included in your packet, and these are online, available for public review at any time. So, I guess with that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors?
One quick clarification. We're just asking for the acceptance of this report, not a, there's no resolution or any binding document, just so you know why we're here.
Counselor, before we get a motion, if you haven't read it, I would encourage you to read it. There's actually quite a bit of good information in there that relates to how this plan can be very useful to us moving forward, and shares a lot of the same similarities as our capital improvement plan, where there are projects in here that are ranked and annually show. Counselor Schroeder?
I'll make a motion to approve the Lewiston Idaho ADA Transition Plan Annual Report 2022.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to approve the Lewiston Idaho ADA Transition Plan Annual Report 2022. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, under the active agenda, Item B, Resolution 2023-20. Considering accepting a donation of brown landscape eight-inch stackable stones from Nespers County, this is an action item, uh, very simple. Um, Counselor Schroeder?
Moved to, I moved to approve the pro- Okay, my eyes skipped down. Um, I moved to approve Resolution 2023-30.
Second.
It's been moved to approve Resolution 2023-20. This is the resolution. Uh, so, is that right, Counselor Schroeder?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there discussion? Those in favor, please, roll call.
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, under, uh, active agenda is Item C, Progressive Design Build Agreement Amendment Number 2. Considering extending the time for Phase 1B by 45 calendar days for the fire station project, this is an action item. Our Chief Michael Busch is here if you need him. Otherwise, it's a pretty straightforward, uh, request. Counselor Schroeder?
I make a motion to approve the Progressive Design Build Agreement Amendment Number 02 between the Core West Inc. and the city of Lewiston.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg to approve the Progressive Design Build Agreement Amendment Number 2 between Core West Incorporated and the city of Lewiston. Is there discussion? Counselor Littke?
Just want to clarify that this is, um, extend the date only, and that was because we had missed the original date, but we have received the document that we were waiting for. Correct? Head nod, just to the public.
There's no financial impact? Further discussion? Clerk Ravencroft?
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselors. Next up, Item D, Transit Grant Funding Agreement Addendum. Considering approval of an addendum to the grant funding agreement for Lewiston Community Center Bus Transfer Stop Construction, this is an action item. Um, Director Senior is here. If, uh, you have questions, otherwise I entertain a motion.
I move to approve Amendment 1 to the FTA 5339 Small Urban Funding Agreement Number 2020-09 between the Idaho Transportation Department of the city of Lewiston.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forssman to approve Amendment 1 to the FTA 5339 Small Urban Funding Agreement Number 2020-09 between the Idaho Transportation Department and the city of Lewiston. Is there discussion? Those in favor, or pardon me, roll call.
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Uh, next up, under the active agenda, Number E, IFB-23-006, 19th Avenue Sidewalk Infill, 15th to 16th, TR 065. Considering the contract between the city of Lewiston Knox Concrete LLC and the amount of $248,685, this is an action item. Director Johnson, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. Uh, here to, for tonight, uh, we're talking about, as the mayor described, a sidewalk infill project. So, this kind of puts a bow on what I was just speaking on earlier as the ADA Transition Plan. So, this is an LTAC grant, Local Highway Technical Advisory Council, uh, that has already been awarded previously, and it's a flat $250,000 grant. Uh, and this we applied for, for sidewalk infill would be on the south side of 19th between 15th and 16th Ave-, or 19th Avenue, 15th and 16th Street, uh, to connect McSorley. So, it's a missing section of sidewalk, uh, which is sorely needed. Um, the, so, if you see in the, in the history, uh, sheet, uh, the project was listed in the CIP. So, this was project number 91. So, when you look at it and you say, well, it's the 91st, 91st-ranked proj-, project, but when, uh, LTAC does a call for projects looking for sidewalk infill for $250,000 or less, we go through, and that's where we pick up these types of projects. And so, when we look at, you know, the capital improvement plan, this is, this, that's the list we use when we start, uh, selecting what projects we apply for grants for. So, this was a dovetailed in that one. One, um, record-keeping issue is, on the agenda, it's listed for an amount of $248,685. That was actually the engineer's estimate, which was low, so the actual price needed, needs to be $285,250. The overage will be picked, so, like I said, it's a flat $250,000 grant that they've actually already written us a check, and that the, oh, that the overage of roughly $40,000 will come out of our ADA, uh, um, transition plan money. So, we have a, we have a, an account that has that money to, to meet exactly these types of needs when there's a shortfall for either a grant or a private development to transition it into our own infrastructure. Um, I think that is everything that you need to know tonight, but I stand for questions.
Counselor Kleberg?
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve, but do I have to make a motion to amend the contract amount as stated on the minutes?
I think if, Counselor, if you just read the motion with the dollar amount in it, we should be fine.
Okay. I'll make a motion to award IFB-23-06 to Knox Concrete LLC and authorize the mayor to execute, to execute the agreement between the city of Lewiston and Knox Concrete LLC in the amount of, the amount of $285,250.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Kleberg, second by Counselor Forssman to award IFB-23-06 to Knox Concrete LLC and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the city of Lewiston and Knox Concrete LLC in the amount of $285,250. Further discussion?
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
Um, we hear a lot from the citizens of using contractors or businesses that are in the valley, um, and I just want to come in that we are using someone that has, um, started in the valley and now is thriving, uh, business owner in here, and, and, um, so I appreciate that, and I, I think it's good to see.
Thank you, Counselor. Always important to acknowledge our local vendors. Clerk Ravencroft?
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, under the active agenda, Item F, Resolution 2023-19. Declaring that an emergency exists and that the public interest and necessity demand the immediate expenditure of public money for the design and construction of an interim solution for water storage in the high zone of the city of Lewiston's water system. This is an action item, and we have with us tonight, uh, Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson. Director, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. One more time. Um, move mics. Can you still hear me? Okay. Uh, here for you tonight, as the mayor has already described, Resolution 2023-19, declaring an emergency for, uh, the High Reservoir. Uh, so, tonight, I'm gonna take about 10 minutes and give you a overview of, uh, basically the history of the event, how we've gotten today, the progress that we've made, uh, and kind of the rough plan moving forward. So, um, hopefully you can read that either on the monitor or on the wall. Uh, so, basically, as you are aware, there was a rupture at the High Reservoir on January 18th. The, the boil order was lifted about eight days later, uh, and so, that basically started, uh, staff and consultants to start looking at what the impact was to the city's water system and how to, to mitigate that. So, during February, most of our effort was to balance out the system, trying to keep that system running, not knowing, um, I, I have some, some maps. I'll show you generally what we're trying to do, but basically trying to backfeed the system to do what it has not traditionally been doing, um, basically trying to put water back into the high system from the low system. Uh, so, that was much of March, uh, then in, or February, then March, we started looking at, uh, nowing, knowing the deficiencies within the system and how it was operating, how were we going to move beyond that? So, knowing that we were going to be short stored water. Stored water is critical for a water system, and we essentially lost close to 40% of our stored water within the system. Uh, and so, we looked at, uh, scenarios that included everything from temporary, uh, water bladders, so basically a giant swimming pool that had a plastic liner on top of it, to, uh, temporary or permanent, uh, steel tanks, concrete tanks, prefab, uh, tank farms, whatever we could get, uh, looking into all those scenarios. Uh, a lot of those things have long lead time. So, for something that if we needed to get that taken care of within months was probably not a, a reality. One solution that we had looked at and became more attractive as time went by was reutilizing, repairing the existing reservoir. And so, uh, that's a little bit what I'm going to be talking about tonight. Uh, so, I'm gonna kind of gonna go ask the, ask the dumb questions. I put this together today, so I'm asking the dumb questions just to make sure we all know what we're doing tonight. What is this actually accomplishing? So, by making an emergency declaration, this will expedite the procurement process. So, if this was any other project within Public Works, we would go out and we would identify a problem. Then we go out and we put a scope of services for an engineer or design build team and say, here's our problem, what's it going to take to get it fixed? So, then that, that's publicly advertised, we weigh all the options, we come back, review it, we draft a contract, we take it before the council, we award it, then they go to work, they come in and they say, well, this is what it's going to take, and here's the lead time on the materials, and here's what we got to get done. A project like this probably takes anywhere from 18 to 24 months. We don't have 18 to 24 months. Uh, so, by declaring this, this allow, this declaration allows us to bisect all that to directly negotiate with the contractors for a contract. Uh, this is the, uh, design build where we have the contractor and the engineer on, side by side, looking at the, the evaluation of re, uh, reuse, reusing the, um, uh, the, the reservoir. What it does is establishes to not exceed limits within the contract. So, there's, uh, the very last section calls out, uh, two provisions, one in which the mayor has the authority to sign a contract from $100,000 to $400,000, uh, with his signatory authority, uh, which, which exceeds his typical, his signature authority is currently $1,000, $100,000. So, that would bump it up to $400,000. Uh, the second provision would be a to not exceed amount of $2 million for a, a contract. So, that would be coming back to the council for execution. But all of those contracts would be negotiated without your standard procurement. That is direct negotiation between the city and the contractor. The reason we've broke it out in two different components is the, the early one, which the mayor has the, would have the authority to sign, allows the contractor to go in there because the, you can't get in to, we got to do a little demolition, we got to do a little, uh, investigation to see, you know, looking at the soils, looking at the roof of the structure, looking at the concrete. We need to get in there and stabilize a site, do some, you know, demo, look into what, what the, what the analysis, what, what the, uh, what it's going to look like to repair it. That will better, uh, educate their, uh, overall bid, which they've told us would not exceed $2 million, hopefully less than that. Uh, and then we would take that contract with a refined scope back to the council, and, and that would be the award for that project. Why is this necessary? Um, so, currently, as I said, the, the system has, uh, really low on, on stored water. Uh, we, once irrigation demand starts ramping up, the system cannot handle it. I, I want to be able to, everybody loves round numbers. We're short a million gallons. That's a, that's a round number. What, the way the water system operates, you have stored water in different areas. You have stored water in North Lewiston, you have stored water back up by the golf course. It all operates differently. And so, if the users all use the water at the same time, we have no water capacity to hold that water back. And so, it would drain, it would depressurize the system. What parts of the system would be depressurized? I don't know. And that's why we need to get the reservoir online to maintain that. Question as, uh, why do we care about irrigation other than it would make the valley look green? The issue would be, we can't control, I mean, we, it would take all summer to go out there and, and make sure that people did not have their sprinklers going. We don't have the staff. It would take, you know, uh, code enforcement to go out there and make sure whoever had a gra-, green yard, that's not allowed. We, we can't have irrigation demand. Any users out there, and if it was dramatically impacted, uh, would depressurize the system and such that it would, it would create problems in fighting fires. Again, where would the fires be? I don't know, and how that system would react to that. So, the problem is, we know we don't have enough stored water to keep the system adequately charged. I don't know what that is, specifically right now, what that solution is. Again, depressurization, collapsed pipes, and another boil order, and we don't have the time for the standard, standard procurement process. So, had to include some charts and pictures to demonstrate. So, if you look on your Y-axis off to the left going up, that's million gallons per day. If you go to the bottom, the X-axis, that is a calendar. So, as you can see, we, the, the rupture occurred, uh, in January, end of January. So, we've been cruising right along here at about 2 million gallons per day. We are at the end of March right now. So, if you look moving forward, it, the weather's only going to get hotter, and the demand upon the system's only going to get higher. These are, this is a, a historic chart. So, all of our consumption by each month from 2013 to 2020. Uh, you can see we've topped out, I believe that one number way at the top, and that was most recent. I think that was 2021, that really hot summer. Um, so, you can see we top out just short of 9 million gallons, and then we go back down. So, anything that comes online after July or middle of July is on the tail end of our, our irrigation season. So, that, there is only so much we can do to try and tamp down. I don't know where the breaking point is, and that's where we're going to start working with the community and our own engineers, our own staff, to try and figure out how the system reacts, because the reservoir will not be online by May. Uh, and you start seeing as, as the trends go up and how we can communicate with the public and get, get the, the public to engage with us to try and keep the system going. It's a fancy chart that didn't come up. Uh, now, that was a map of our, of our water system. Anyway, it's a complicated water system, multiple zones. I've got this, I got the, uh, that is High Reservoir circled there in the middle. So, essentially, what I was trying to demonstrate with that slide and this slide is, that is the heart of the system. So, everything from downtown, uh, which is in the low system, the high system, which would be Normal Hill, kind of using broad descriptors, that's all either directly fed by the system, by the reservoir, or it's now being fit, backfed from the low system into the, the High Reservoir system. So, um, it, it is a complicated system, and trying to describe hydraulic grade lines and how the system will react whether, you know, during the demands of irrigation season is difficult. So, where do we go from here? So, generally, uh, uh, if an emergency declaration is agreed to tonight, the mayor can execute the preliminary select, preliminary services and for selective demolition and evaluation of this, of the existing reservoir. Uh, as I said, that will give them further, uh, knowledge on how the system looks, if there's anything that they have not identified from a distance at this point, and they will be able to refine their quote and come back, and a detailed scope of service will be back, be brought back to the council for the, the ultimate, the, the interim fix. Uh, and then they will execute the contract, and we will go as quickly as possible, uh, to make sure that that reservoir is, is, um, safely able to hold a volume of water. What that volume is, I don't know. When it, when it ruptured that morning, it still had a million, between a million and a million and a half gallons of water in it, uh, and that is submerged below the, 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 the burn there. So, I, I feel confident that it, it can hold a million gallons. It may be able to hold 2 million or 3 million. I, I don't expect it to go back to the full 4 million it was, but that's to be determined by the engineers once we start working on the, on the design. Uh, and the goal is to get, get stored water back into the system so we can then, uh, then we can move on and start focusing on a long-term solution or solutions. Uh, we've talked a little bit about growth in, in Lewiston. Uh, one thing I, I have observed is when this, this, uh, reservoir was built in the 20s, I don't know if there was a single customer that lived up from that reservoir. I don't know percentage-wise how many- I don't know percentage-wise how many people in Lewiston live above the reservoir versus below it now, but it's probably a significant amount. So you look at the silver lining and the gray cloud here, this was not what we planned, but this may allow us to better, better diversify our system moving forward. So what happened, you know, a question I get a lot is, well, what happens if we vote no? We would lean back and we would go back to the standard procurement procedures. We would have to weigh our options, because as I said, if this thing comes online in October, it does us great for next, next irrigation season, but it doesn't do us any good. So there would be considerable irrigation restrictions throughout this summer, and we would work with, you know, the city assets, golf course, parks, anybody that waters within the city, our community partners, that would be, you know, high school, college, the county, anybody, we would start pleading with them to try and conserve as much water as we can. Typical question that has come up is, how is this paid for? To date, all of the expenditures that we have paid have come out of our water utility system. These funds that we would be moving forward now with the interim solution, those come out of our reserve funds. So a healthy utility, I'm sad that Ken left, but these are enterprise funds. Enterprise funds, so your water bill goes directly into the water department. Back a couple years ago, we started building a reserve fund, there was a light reserve fund, but we, I don't know what the percentage was, but we, we built up a reserve fund over, over the last couple of years. I was not hoping that we would use it this quickly, but unfortunately we are. We have a reserve fund exactly for this. This is just about going to exhaust it. In the meantime, work will continue, we're working with our insurance, that we have coverage for all city, city facilities and infrastructure, have not gotten any resolution to that. Ironically, the DEQ with their annual, I guess semi-annual call for projects, we had already turned in our, our call for projects, but they didn't close quite yet, so we modified it the week after this reservoir event. So we have included roughly thirty million dollars for a reservoir and a new transmission line coming up from the water treatment plant. We've continued to have conversations with the legislature, the governor, and our own federal delegates, to see if there's any relief, either state or federal. And we do have a small amount that we've been in conversation with the DEQ, they have emergency funds for exactly this type of stuff, but it's not, not on the order of magnitude that's going to make a huge bit of difference on this one. So generally, I think that's, that's all I have for tonight, but I stand here for questions.
Thank you, Director. I just want to add a quick comment, because I see Elaine busy over there writing everything down. Our conversations have been with the governor's office, not the governor directly, we did talk to him one time directly, in person, but otherwise weekly, I contact folks through email, text messages, phone calls, not only the governor's office, but some of the other constitutional officers and our elected legislators from around this area, so.
Counselors.
Forgot what I was going to say now, because I was listening to you.
Counselor Littke.
I just want to make sure I heard correctly, so in the water utility reserve, you said that it would, funding this would basically wipe it out, so we can assume that it's around two million?
There's a couple, there's a couple different funds, there's a, and it's funny, because Amy, Amy Gordon doesn't, we look at, engineers look at it one way, Amy probably looks at it a different way. There are two funds in there, there is a reserve fund, and then there's an opportunity fund that we, we, the reserve fund was for emergencies, the opportunity fund was for, you know, like grant match programs or things like that. So all told, yeah, we're, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but yeah, we have about two million, two and a half million dollars available between those two accounts, plus we moved, we have moved projects around that were a high priority previously, that this has now shifted in there. So I, at a future date, when we get to that two million dollar expenditure, or hopefully less than two million, I'll do, I'll give you a better idea of where the utility sits as far as financially, how healthy it is, and what the impact is on this.
Mayor. Counselor Forsman.
Just to, we had obviously a public comment about spending this money in other ways. I would assume we're kind of limited on what we can actually even use that money for.
Yeah, unfortunately, or well, fortunately, I mean, when you pay your water bill, you expect that that money goes straight for that utility. I mean, I, you know, we have wastewater funds that are available, but it's only for wastewater funds. We have transportation dollars, it's only available for transportation dollars. So yes, this, this money would not go towards Twenty First Street, it would only go for water facilities.
Right, thank you.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, so this interim fund is two million dollars going in to temporarily fix the reservoir, is the end game to actually fix it for long-term use, or moving in a different direction?
Yeah, finishing up, I realized I did not identify, so I've looked at this as three phases. The first phase was get off the boil order, which was, was an emergency. This phase that we're in now is the interim, and to be honest, we don't have the money to do the final, final construction. So the interim, if we get this online, and let's just say arbitrarily, we have two million gallons, or two and a half million gallons in that reservoir, it's safe, it's safe, it's stable, we've got, you know, triple alarms on it, and we have an overflow that can handle everything, it may be an interim solution for a couple of years, as we have an opportunity to evaluate, you know, what the other system is, or what the rest of the system, where the demands are, based off of growth and our other, you know, the transmission line that feeds this, feeds this reservoir, it was slated for replacement next. And so we've now queued up quite a few projects directly based in this reservoir area.
Just one follow-up. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Just, so how long would it take to put two million gallons of water back in there?
We've been wondering that ourselves. So a lot of it depends on when you want to do it. So the problem right now, or I guess, well, right now, the problem is, and the slide I didn't show you was, we have a brand-new water treatment plant that is coming online right now, and we have nowhere to put that water. And so we, right now, if that, if that reservoir held water and that transmission line, which is ready, we could, we could fill that thing in a matter of a day or two. When the demand hits, that water now has to be distributed to the rest of the system, i.e. why we need stored water. And so it may take longer to get that reservoir filled when, when the demand starts ramping up to eight million gallons a day.
Counselor Littke.
Okay, you referenced that, had that money slated, the reserve, for some high priority projects, and we've had to move that. Can you just touch lightly on what those high priority projects?
It would be like the transmission line, we have a couple other, a planning project, and I'd have to go back, DEQ provided us some planning projects. So a lot of our, a lot, Twenty First Street does not have, so Twenty First Street Booster Pump, Booster Station, which is just south of Taco Bell, so if you see that building, that's what that is. That traditionally has been used to take the water from that high zone and run it up into other demanding, other areas that demanded the water. We've actually now flipped it, so it's now feeding water back down to that lower system. There's not, there's not a lot of redundancy into it, so we had a grant from the DEQ to evaluate redundancy, energy conservation, trying to, trying to upgrade the system, and so a lot of those things would be fed out of that, that and the transmission line.
Counselor Littke.
Just to follow up, not necessarily to that, but something else you'd said earlier, in reference to if we voted no, that staff would be basically round the clock keeping people on a restricted basis. And so when we talk about that, as we expand the surface area of our city, is that kind of how you have to determine how you, for your staffing needs? I'm just looking at long-term costs of if we don't use this money now, and then having to have staff, you know, let's look at the overall costs. And then just in reference to that, when we talk about annexing and adding responsibility to the public works, what does that look like for your staffing needs? Because I do think that's a budgetary consideration that we need to take into consideration when we consider all of these things.
Yeah, I would say, if you would have asked me that question in December, my answer would be, we're actually, with a water treatment plant that's going from nineteen twenties technology to twenty twenties technology, we're actually becoming more efficient with our staff. And so that allows us to move people in different locations, become smarter. With this, this scenario now, with no stored, stored water, there's, there's enough redundancy built within the system, it never fails, it's Fourth of July. I'm just going to tell you, if you think you're going to go out of town for Fourth of July, that's the system when Twenty First Street Booster Station goes down. And so trying to find more redundancy in there, and that's where staff, staff is just constantly, as the demand ramps up in the summer, it becomes just, it gets just to be a, trying to find where, where pumps are down, or there's a leaky main, or, you know, whatever's going on. This, what has happened with this reservoir, it has taken, in the past, we could backfeed the waters from some other area, maybe high reservoir, with four and a half million gallons of stored water, that gave us maybe two days, a day, two days of capacity, that if something was really broken, we could fix that. This is gone now. And so I don't know where to go with staff now of, are we going to go enforce the irrigation restrictions, or are we going to go try and keep water flowing into the pipes? And so staffing-wise, if we can get the reservoir going and get the system balanced, so it can accommodate, we can get water out of the new treatment plant, and we can handle eight million gallons a day, it is a lot, but it's not a lot. The treatment plant can be upgraded to handle twelve million gallons, and that's, it's automated, it is a, we went from the horse and buggy to a Cadillac. It's just working out all those kinks to get this system, because you asked a very good question, I'm kind of passionate about it. You've asked where, staffing-wise. So an example would be, everything, I shouldn't say everything, a good portion of our system is a hundred-plus years old. So you asked, what else was tabulated, or in that estimate, downtown Normal Hill Water Main replacement? So which hundred-year asset should we chase down first? That's my question. If it's, we have a low reservoir, we have a high reservoir, we had a hundred-year water plant, we have a hundred-plus-year-old water mains downtown, they're all come and do at the same time. And it's not your fault, it's not my fault, it's not even my predecessor's fault, it's not any one person's fault. It's, it's the system, it's the cards that we've been dealt, and this is what we've got to do to get ahead of that. That's kind of a long, passionate story, but I guess that's what I, what I lean on when we start talking about staffing, budgets, it all needs to be upgraded. It can all be updated at one time, but it takes strategic planning to get out in front of these things before they break.
Counselor Schroeder.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-19.
Second. I'm moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Kleiberg to approve Resolution 2023-19, is their discussion. Counselor Kleiberg.
I guess just, you know, a comment, and probably is not going to make me a whole lot of friends, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, we live in our ecologic zone, if you will, it's a sub-boreal desert, we get eleven inches of rain here. That's why, when you look at the Lewiston Hill, you've got sagebrush, you've got, you know, native grasses, stuff like that. That's what it is. So if, if we can get this fixed and have some reserved water, I'm more concerned about fire capacity than I am about somebody having a green lawn in front of their house. You know, be straight up about that. You know, zero escaping landscape, you go down to Nevada, Arizona, we live in a desert. Those are the facts. So if somebody doesn't have a green lawn, I mean, you can certainly grow vegetables, just take it out there and handwater it and stuff like that, it's not going to be near as consumptive as watering a grass. You know, I guess it's just a message we have to put out as a city, saying, this is the deal this year, folks, the extra water's not there, and, you know, you can water, you know, every three days, or every four days, or, you know, what have you. And if we've got dry baseball fields, and, you know, dry grass at the golf course, that's the way it is. So I guess that's where I'm coming from, is, you know, I live in the orchards. My lawn's a pile of crap, I mean, I get water whenever I want to turn it on, and it's full of weeds, and I go out and I fight them, and it's just, you know, it's a nightmare. So me, it's not that big a deal to have a green lawn. That's all I'm saying.
Counselor Littke.
I have a question. I'm sorry. When I look at this, the, the pro that I have is that you're exactly right, we have hundred-year-old assets that we need to figure out how to approach. And so by ignoring this, I worry about the pressure it puts on other parts of our city, and the systems, and the redundancy. By not doing that, we are at risk of more things failing. Is that your engineer-educated opinion, as opposed to my turn-on-the-hose-and-water-tomato-plant opinion?
Yeah, I'm not sure, as a Public Works Director, I don't want to say it's all, it's all going to fail, and we're, you know, case in point would be high and low reservoir. It, you know, it was built in the twenties, it is a giant bathtub that somebody put a, put a, put a roof on, both of them, they're similar design, they look stout and hardy from the inside, and never in a million years would I think we would be sitting here talking about that. And that's about the rupture of the high reservoir. And so, you know, but it was such a key cog of the water system, we can't, we can't ignore it, so we need to get that stored water in there, and there's no solution in the short term that can provide, whether it's tomato plants, or fire suppression, or anything like that, that, I don't know how this system will function in July or August. So, yeah, I am concerned about all the other, you know, because I've said, I think already twice, that transmission line, you know, like I said, we have that brand-new Cadillac running down there at the water plant, but our, my nightmare scenario has been that transmission line. It is the one that I'm worried about. We have, we have mains downtown that have failed continually, and, you know, I, but, but they don't, it doesn't matter if we don't have a water system that can be dependable three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And to get it to be dependable, we need stored water, and we need stored water in the high zone.
Okay, counselors, if we're ready, I'll ask Tech Ravencroft.
Council President Littke.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleiberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Counselors, thank you, Director, thank you, counselors. We're going to jump up to Romanu World Nine, unfinished and new business, City Council comments, comments shall be related to an item, shall not be related to an item currently for the City Council, or an item that may come for the City Council in the foreseeable future, and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselor Littke.
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, commend the mayor for bringing the concerns of the city to our state officials, our duly-elected officials. And then I would also just implore the public to pay attention to what our state legislature is doing. We had a tax, property tax relief bill that was vetoed by the governor today, we are still in session, and I would implore the public to reach out to your local legislators and ask them to sharpen their pencils and figure out a way to bring us relief back to Lewiston. I think tonight is a perfect example of why we have to look at the big picture and all the components, and have our voice be heard in Boise, to ensure that we can move forward in a productive manner.
Mayor.
Counselor, Counselor Forsman.
Sometimes I get to come across a citizen talking about maybe some intersections or road safety, or just in conversation. And so I had, came across an area, I believe it's Fourteenth and Fifteenth, Linden Ave, that has been known to have speeding, so I brought it up to our police chief, and brought it up to our police chief and Dustin, our Public Works Director, and the mayor. And they suggested that I make a comment that you can, as a citizen, uh, go to citioflewiston.org/department/polic to put your concerns and comments on there, um, so that way it can be highlighted and get attention on it. So I wanted to make sure that I said that. Again, the website is citioflewiston.org/department/polic to make, uh, comments or concerns on any, uh, speeding or traffic areas, or what it might be on there. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kleberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had a couple of comments I was going to make, but I'll agree with Counselor, with Council President Littke, because I have emailed our local legislators, the easy solution, well, it's not going to be a great solution, but the easy solution is reinstalling or reinstating the property tax exemption to where it should be and indexing it. And it's a simple solution. The one that they proposed, MOIL and Grow, is, is not a long-term solution. It's not sustainable, and it's really no good. Um, I've also heard some comments about our lack of transparency, or how things are done. Nobody knows about them and stuff like that. I just want to remind everybody that may be watching or is in the room, you know, we were the first town in Lewis, or in Idaho to, uh, get opengov.org, which is a program that you can access through the city's, um, website, and you can see every check that's been written. I mean, it's, it's, it's easy. If I can do it, anybody can do it. Alls you got to do is get on there. People want to know where our money's going. It's right there. It's on the computer. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, city boards and commission updates.
Nothing, councilors. I'm just going to offer a comment here. Um, I think, um, some of the comments that I've heard is that, um, at the mayor's office is folks want to hear a little bit more about what's going on with some of these other commissions and boards. So, um, if you're able to at future meetings, uh, you know, just give the public a quick update on what's going on with these other boards and commissions. I think they want to know. And I think for the record, uh, we need to hear something, um, you know, so we kind of know what's going on there. And we all have, uh, commissions and boards that we serve on, so, uh, please consider that. Uh, mayor comments. Um, I guess what I'll share is that, um, it has been very busy at the city. Um, we need to get this reservoir situation addressed. It's very challenging. Um, we are going to have, next Monday, um, your packets today, um, but next Monday, you're going to have a, a nice glossy copy of our new strategic plan. And you'll be able to take a look at that and critique it and talk to us. But, um, staff has been working very hard on that. Uh, Counselor Spicklemeyer, you had mentioned this in some comments a couple of months ago, but it's something that'll, I think, help all of us take a look at, you know, how we're prioritizing where we spend our money, where we might go in the next budget year. But, um, a lot of effort went into that, so, um, it's available now in draft form, but we'll have a shiny copy by next Monday for you, and for the public, too, that might be interested in looking at it. So our commitment's there with the public. Advisory Board Commission Appointments, action item. Uh, first up is, um, D1 Disability Advisory Commission, considering the appointment of Matthew Ruth for a three-year term. This is an action item. I move to approve the appointment of Matthew Ruth to the Disability Advisory Commission.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Schroder to approve the appointment of Matthew Ruth to the Disability Advisory Commission. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Littke.
Um, I, and I do apologize, uh, I did not give an update for the Disability Advisory Commission, because they were pretty much on the agenda with the ADA. But, um, I do want to speak to Mr. Ruth's, uh, ability to bring things to the table. He is, uh, very much involved, and I believe he will bring some value, especially to our elder, um, population that's disabled, as he serves a, a very good amount of those. So I'm excited to see another voice on that commission.
Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Uh, next up is our Public Works Advisory Commission. This is one, um, that I'm very excited about. I know Director Johnson is too. Considering the appointment of Ryan Rader, Laura Wright, Kaylee Philippi, and I think it's Philippi acting, Kevin Kelly for three-year terms, these are action items. I'm going to take the first one individually, councilors. Um, Ryan Rader was already appointed to the commission, but for a two-year term, and it should have been a three-year term. So we're going to reconsider that first. Uh, it's a single action item. Motion to, I move to approve the appointment of Ryan Rader to the Public Works Advisory Commission for a three-year term.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Schroder to approve the appointment of Ryan Rader to the Public Works Advisory Commission for a three-year term. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm going to combine the next, uh, three appointments into a single motion. And, um, if you've not had a chance to review these applications, um, I would recommend you do that. Um, and I, and I would like to call out one of those. Um, Laura Wright, Ms. Laura Wright has submitted a, uh, an application that has an awful lot of information in it, where I think, um, as a city, we're just going to be, uh, blessed to have her there, but we're going to benefit greatly by having her, uh, expertise that she brings to this. So very excited about that. And the others, too. Um, Kaylee, this will be the second commission that she's serving on. She's a student at LCSC, so we're happy to have our youth involved like this. She's a real go-getter, so we're very happy about that. And then, of course, uh, Kevin Kelly, a former city council member who I think does easy, the unplanning is only given today yet. Yeah, so he's pretty active in our community, too. So I move to approve the appointment of Laura Wright, Kaylee Philippi, and Kevin Kelly to the Public Works Advisory Commission.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Kleberg to approve the appointment of Laura Wright, Kaylee Philippi, and Kevin Kelly to the Public Works Advisory Commission. Is there further discussion? Comments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you for those who are willing to step forward and serve. If you're listening or watching from home, we sincerely appreciate your service. Uh, next up, Parks and Recreation Commission, considering the reappointment of James Kirk for a three-year term. This is an action item. And I move to approve the reappointment of James Kirk to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve the reappointment of James Kirk to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you. James, if you're listening from home, we appreciate your service. Uh, next up is the Library Board, considering the reappointment of Josh Brown for a five-year term. This is an action item. I move to approve the reappointment of Josh Brown to the Library Board.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve the reappointment of Josh Brown to the Library Board. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Josh, uh, thank you for serving. We appreciate your service to the city of Lewiston. Counselors, next up, uh, under the active agenda, or unfinished and new business, we have item E Agenda Topics. Counselor Littke.
Uh, yes, and again, I apologize for not doing an update. Um, however, uh, the airport is, uh, something that I feel like I'm going to get terminology wrong, so I try not to, um, give updates on things that I, I'm going to give erroneous information. So I'd like to make a motion that we invite, uh, both the director and/or, uh, members of the airport board to come and present, because they did, um, they have made some recent, um, movement as far as an RFP for, uh, new business, and, uh, there's also some, uh, other improvements that I feel they would be best to present to the council, the public, as to what is going on airport.
Second.
Counselor, do you have a date in mind with that? Motion.
Uh, would like it to be the A Work Session, I would.
Clerk Craven-Croft, do you have a date on that, please?
I have two, uh, I'm sorry.
The first, um...
I think it's first. May, May 1st.
Is it May 1st?
Yeah.
A formal motion, I would move to invite, uh, Director Isaacs and/or members of the airport board to present to City Council at the May 1st Work Session 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Littke, seconded by Counselor Kleberg, to add to the May 1st Work Session, an agenda topic, the topic being, uh, Lewiston Airport Director and Board Members Presentation. Counselor. Clerk Craven-Croft.
Mayor, I, I would like to make a little call. I just kind of need to go back. I was trying to get members for... For the Compensation Review Committee, since we only have until June 1st, we have three applications. We are trying to get five members, and, uh, they need to, uh, have a recommendation to the council by June 1st, so it's a very short time period. So anyone interested, we would sure love to have you apply. Thank you. Excuse me for interrupting.
That was our commercial break, councilors. Okay, um, I'll restate the motion.
Can you give maybe a little? Okay.
Um, restate the motion. Motion by Counselor Littke, seconded by Counselor Kleberg, and this is to add, um, to the May 1st Work Session Agenda Topic, Lewiston Airport Director and Board Members to come give a presentation. We'll send an invitation to. Is there further discussion on that? Favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So ordered. Thank you. Um, and before we adjourn, um, yes, we do have our Compensation Review Committee that we added new to Chapter 2 this year. And the purpose for that was, again, to try to get our public involved and give the citizens a chance to have a voice in their government. And this is real common in, in other local units of government. And we need five to seven, uh, members on this commission. And it, uh, the term goes to the end of this year, but really, you have, your work has to be done by June 1st. And so it might mean one or two meetings. And, uh, the task is to make recommendations to the City Council on compensation for the next two years, for the council members and for the mayor. And these have to be set at least 75 days before the next election, so that's why the date, uh, is set. If we have that recommendation by June 1st, then the council can put it on a future agenda, and then, um, consider it and vote on it appropriately. So if you're at home, please, uh, contact the city clerk's office. Um, if you know someone, um, please invite him to attend. We'd like to hear from them, or, uh, to apply for that. We'd love to hear from them, so. Counselor, that brings us to, uh, the end.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to adjourn, uh, seconded by Counselor Schroder. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.